And. Let's see, okay, so and I just a note to Osana for these meetings of sound, I like to let everybody just go ahead, keep them unmuted at your side and let them mute and unmute themselves. Unless it gets out of hand and then we might go to the more restricted.
Oh, yeah.
No, 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 we never do that. So. I need to, I need to bring you up to date on a couple of things. If you recall, we were ready to send the policy for filling board vacancies. However, we took it to the board and it was on their agenda and then Crosby had noted there was an inconsistency between the verbiage and the example. So, and I couldn't find the other, the appropriate thing. So I, we basically pulled that and I was to bring it back to the board using with the correct copy. Unfortunately, when I went in to make the corrections, I discovered some inconsistencies. So I'm, we're going to, I'm going to have to bring it back to you again. As we keep, but it's, it's not really a bad thing. It's just a complicated issue. And especially when we're trying to initiate the ranked choice method of voting, that's once you get a hold of it, it's, it's not so hard to understand, but getting that first grasp is a real challenge. I'll have a version to bring back to you and it's substantially the same, but with slight differences. So I, and I didn't want to take it to the board without passing it in front of you again, just to be sure that I hadn't gone something against your wishes on that. So that's one thing that will come in, I'm hoping to bring that back for a brief discussion at our next meeting. I think I can probably manage that. The other one, the great, here's an interesting one too. And if you have a chance to listen to, it was yesterday's board meeting regarding our, the grants policy that we passed, that we wrapped up in a nice ribbon. And we presented, presented it to them last time. But some questions in fact did come up, things that we hadn't really quite thought about. And so they're sending it back to us for a little further refinement. Again, this is not a bad thing. But as we get more heads and eyes in a situation and with policies in particular, small little things can have consequences way beyond what you would think, or maybe as we're arriving at policies, there, there may be situations that we simply didn't occur to us. And so it's just another, it's an iterative process, but I think in the end, they will be friendly with the policy that we sent. It's just that there are some areas that, that need some clarification. So I just wanted to alert you to those. And the other thing which you guys passed at the last meeting was a report to the board regarding the lighting, street lighting and lighting on, on district properties. And there, the problem there is what we really asking the board to do is to make a motion to send that to us. So that to officialize it as it were ended, but in order to do that, it has to come forward, not as a report from me, but as an actual agenda item. So it's just a matter of, I'm not making any changes to it other than what I sent around, where I just changed a couple of words, you know, just to keep the grammar consistent. But what I'll do is I'll put that as an agenda item, not as a committee report on the next, that I, the next board agenda, I can get it on to, which will probably be the second meeting in December, maybe the first meeting, if I, if I can arrange it. So that will go forward. I just wanted to let you know where everything was. So your, your, your good work is having results, but as the public's business, as you may have realized, does go in fits and starts. And it's kind of the nature of the beast. So, so please don't get discouraged because it's all, if the work is there. And I think we'll probably get some good, some good feedback on that. The other aspect, which I'll really save for later agenda item is today in my committee, my report to the board, I raised the issues of the correspondence that we were talking about and which is on our agenda later on today. So when we get to that item, I'll give you a little bit of information that I picked up from the other board members. And I'll, and just right here, I will say that it might be profitable for us to, for all of you to look at that section of today's meeting later on. So you don't just have to believe what I say, but because they did enter into some rather interesting discussions about correspondence and it's, it's again, one of those things where something that seems to be straightforward may ends up with areas that we hadn't really considered. So it's, it's interesting. I'll, I'll try to tell you what I can and when we get to that, but I just thought I'd mention now. And when I report back to you with the tentative agenda for the coming, the coming two or three months, I'll also include the timing where you can look at that particular section. So you don't have to watch the whole meeting. Anyway, I think that's enough for me. Do we have any of our ad hoc subcommittee reports? Does anybody have anything? Let me see where I think some, most everything has been kind of postponed, but do you have anything that's subcommittee report that's not somehow or other referenced in the actual agenda? Yeah, Claudia.
The only thing I'd like to say is that if you don't know already that the Board of Supervisors did approve, moving forward with a code, the code change on the lighting, the lighting code that was Tuesday. And very good. And Bruce Gibson announced it at the North Coast Advisory Council meeting on Wednesday night. So we're very, very happy. Just put it in, they had priority one, two, and three, it got put into priority two, which means that they'll at least work on it and they'll pay their planners to work on the lighting code change. But this is good news for the policy committee, because if we're trying to promote changing out the lighting and updating the lighting, then now we have the support of the county and the planners. And so anyway, so I know we were very excited. It's a year and a half. We've been, you know, bugging Bruce Gibson's office, you know, so anyways.
Excellent, excellent, Claudia. So yeah, it is a persistence does pay off and good job, you know.
Question?
Yes, yes, Leslie.
And the we that you reference is beautify Cambria, correct? You're not weing the policy committee. You're saying we as beautify Cambria are happy about this, Claudia, correct?
This is the beautify Cambria's dark sky initiative committee.
Right, right. It just, it was confusing because you kind of mixed the apples and oranges, the policy is working on that, but we're not actually part of the advocacy towards county of San Luis, the policy itself. So just clear, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, there's, English doesn't have, there are some languages that have we, that has, there's the inclusive we, which means me and you, and the other we, which says me and that other guy over there. So unfortunately, yeah, we, we fell into that particular hole. Any other, let's see disaster preparedness, vet's hall fees, conservation and ethics.
They're all on hold.
Okay, everything's on hold. Okay, so nobody has anything else to say where they think it might be an ad hoc subcommittee report. You could have an ad hoc committee of one. Okay, so moving then to public comment. So we do have one member of the public here. Is there anyone that in the public or including staff, if you wish, you're, you're public too. Anybody want to make a comment before we start with our regular business? Okay, you put a minute there. Okay, seeing none. Let us proceed. So the first item is, now let me see, we need to adjust for Claudia. Let me see. Let's do, can we do the homeless first?
Can we do the consent agenda first?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Sorry, I totally, apologies. Thank you, Leslie. Yes, consent agenda, which is to approve the October 29th regular meeting minutes.
Prove it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Claudia and then.
Second.
Yeah, Claudia.
Motion to approve.
Sorry. So, so shall we say Claudia moved and Leslie, Leslie seconded? Is that agreeable?
Yes.
Okay, sorry Ted, your hand went out too late.
But I.
Okay, so yeah, let's do a, Osana, can we have a roll call vote on this, please? Here she comes.
Yes. You'd like a roll call?
If you please.
All right. Okay, so Don Howell.
Claudia was the motion maker. So let's start with her. Claudia and then Leslie.
Leslie.
Okay, Claudia Harmon. Leslie Richards.
Aye.
Gordon Heinrichs.
Aye.
Ted Key.
Aye.
Don Howell.
And Don Howell doesn't vote normally, so unless there's a tie.
Okay.
Very good. Motion passes four to zero.
So.
So minute stand adopted as adopted as.
Do you get John's vote not counting because he's absent?
Yeah, John's absentee, right?
Yeah, one absent, right. Yeah, four, four, four and one absent. You're, you're.
Okay.
Yeah, I realize I should be putting that in. Yeah. Okay, now we get to go to. Okay, so if you're all in agreement, actually, let me ask Claudia, because she's the one that's got to leave early. Claudia, which one do you have these three items, which would you like to take first?
Well, I'd like to do the lighting one first because isn't the lighting on there?
No.
That's, that's ready to go to the board.
Oh, I thought we had to make a motion on it.
No, I'm sorry. What it is, is I could report to the board that what you had done, you know, what we had done. But that doesn't allow, what we really want is the board to make a motion to officially ask us to finish the job and make the policy. But that, for that agenda item, because of Brown Act restrictions, it has to be actually be an agenda item. So it'll come up, how you're going to see it on the board's agenda will be discussion and consideration of policy committees report regarding lighting.
So they already approved to put it on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, I misunderstood you. I thought we had to make a motion to ask them to make a motion to.
No, 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 you, you guys already did your part. I realize it's kind of confusing there. So.
About the homeless, I, we didn't get a chance to talk to Carlos Mendoza, but he is here. And I, I think we should just go over just briefly what we have as far as the, the, the draft, a document for homeless.
Okay, so what let's do is let's say, Claudia, if you'd like to just sort of present it in general. And then do we need to put something up that people can see?
Yeah, we need that draft, the draft policy.
You want to make comments also?
She wants to go first. Go ahead and talk about Carlos, but I have the actual information concerning the current status of Boise, Idaho.
Okay, well, before we do that, if we need, if we need material, it's got to be visible to the public as well. So can you advise me as to where that, is that a draft that you sent me or is it one that you guys have?
Don, I've said it to you multiple times. You have three copies of the final revised draft sent to you.
Okay, and that's what Claudia is referring to? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's shorty, the one that takes out pros. It was the last one, two meetings ago.
Okay, if you bear with me then.
Can I read my statement while you're looking for the draft? I have an update on the Boise, Idaho decision concerning removing homeless from public property.
Okay, that would be all right. Yeah, why don't you go ahead and do that while I look for the drafter?
So the law has changed of rate late. I know I've got some good news. LA Times opinion piece, September 25th, 2020. Homeless encampments are grim fixtures in Los Angeles. There isn't enough housing and shelter for homeless population that has increased by 16% of the city over the last year. But another grim reality in Los Angeles is fire, and that is the one reason not what's standing in the above concerns, to move homeless people off of encampments and brush areas and wooded parks. There has been an astonishing 80% uptick in fires involving homeless people so far this year and over the same time period in 2019. The Skirball filed that destroyed six homes in Bel Air neighborhood, damaged dozens of others, burned down over 400 acres in December 2017, was sparked by a cooking fire at an encampment in the canyon opposite of the Boulevard. So the bottom line here in this article, it discusses how they are, Los Angeles is allowed to go ahead and move homeless off of areas that are high fire risk for fire safety. That's what happened over in Paso Robles. The Boise, Idaho decision does not apply to this situation. The Boise, Idaho decision that is being referenced by all the homeless advocates in county of San Luis is concerning the availability of housing for these individuals that you remove off the encampments. And with the opening of the Hotel Six in Paso Robles, we have 110 more housing available places for homeless to actually go to if they need to. So this idea that we can't move homeless off of CCSD properties because of the Boise, Idaho decision is false. The information that these advocates are expanding upon in the community does not apply to this situation. County of San Luis is actively involved as well as Paso Robles and other areas like Atascu, who are being allowed to remove homeless populations out of wooded areas or fire, red fire zones. And they are perfectly legal to go ahead and do that because of the fire health and safety issue that's involved here. We have had, I've talked to the fire chief. We have had multiple responses to fire issues with encampments on Fiskelini Ranch. So this is an issue that can be, they can, they can ease the concern of individuals that were fearful that we would be under litigation for removing these homeless from the Fiskelini Ranch or those areas. So I'm going to send this article, this just came out, it is a, and I wrote a note on this article. This is the LA Times opinion section. So what I wrote in here was currently supposed representatives of the slow county homeless population repeatedly stressed that due to the Boise, Idaho court decision of 2019, it is now illegal to remove homeless encampments from public property. This is blatantly false and a misrepresentation of the law. The Boise decision deals with having adequate shelter space available for homeless individuals forcibly cleared from illegal encampments. And since Cambria is in a high fire risk area, we are insulated from potential litigation due to overall health and safety of the entire local population. So that was the research I've been doing recently because that's been the, the blowback from all these agencies like the Hope Group and other agencies is they, they have a legal right to be on Fiskelini Ranch. They do not. I am sorry, it does not apply. Remember in Boise, Idaho, we had people that were actually freezing to death on the street because there was not enough beds for them to be put into. We have adequate facilities available to take these individuals. They don't want to move off Fiskelini Ranch. That's the problem. They're not willing to go by the rules and regulations that these echo in Prado Center. You have to have rules and regulations for safety reasons inside their facility. So they're not allowed to participate or do the activities that they can do free form on Fiskelini Ranch. So anyhow, that's my update.
Thank you, Leslie.
You're welcome.
Now let me share the screen here and see if this is the appropriate thing that, so hold on a second here. Now it's this one here.
While you're doing that, Carlos is in the audience and Mr. Chairperson, would you be willing to allow Carlos to address how many people are currently on Fiskelini Ranch and other CCSD properties, see if he has account on that?
Sure. Should we do that before looking at the, the Leslie's draft or it's kind of why don't, because Carlos is here, I think let's take advantage of his presence and that way if, once we get through the discussion, if he needs to go out and actually do work other than sit and watch this entertaining thing, hi Carlos. So yes, would you go ahead and perhaps give us a little more information, what Leslie, what Claudia was speaking of then?
Sure, yeah, it's good to see you all. I think I filled in the board yesterday at the, at the board meeting on the homeless and the numbers. So as you know, there is a large encampment on Highway One and Cambria Drive. Last week on Tuesday, CCSD staff, myself went in there to inspect the area. We saw about seven to 10 encampments, very large encampments in there, about 10 to 15 people living in those encampments. We also inspected the Fiskelini Ranch, the areas that typically we had issues with homeless encampments on the east ranch, on the west part of the ranch, behind Marble Bank. As you're coming down the highway from Burton and you're going north, we have some properties on both sides of the highway. All that got inspected. We didn't find any homeless encampments on any of that. So most, if not all of the encampments that are on CCSD property are all located there at Cambria Drive and Highway One. We continue to have issues with, let's say, storage of homeless stuff on other properties. At the public restroom parking lot on the east part of town. We also have the same issue on the pocket park on Center Street. We've, we're still dealing with that. There's stuff there right now as well. And we've, we've been working with the sheriff to try to get that cleared out. As you recall, a few months ago, we did a major cleanup on that park, which was very expensive. So we want to, we want to get to that before, before it gets larger. But that's, that's the update on, on the encampments on the ranch or on CCSD properties.
Thank you, Carlos. I do have one question I was kind of curious about is the folks out there in the large encampment there, over by bridge, what is it, Highway One and Cambria Drive. What are they doing about cooking and stuff? Are they, are they using fire, open fires, cook stoves? I'm just kind of trying to assess the problem, or are they cooperating with us and saying, oh, let us stay here, but we won't light any fires? What is the situation regarding that?
So every, just about every encampment that I've encountered, seen, cleaned up, has some sort of heat source, whether it's for warmth or for cooking. On our inspection of those properties, we found barbecue grills, propane tanks. Most of them are using small propane tanks and stoves to, to, to cook and, and to heat. So obviously that is a major concern because of the amount of vegetation that's there and fire risk.
Okay, but no, no bonfire, no evidence of any bonfires or that kind of stuff?
I, I did not find any evidence of actual bonfires, wood, you know, rock kind of a thing. So it's mainly propane and barbecue grills that they're using there.
Okay, I guess where, what I was coming from is if the, if these folks are, I mean, they're just folks like you and me that don't have a home, if they're being careful, in other words, are they being observant of the, of the serious danger that to themselves and the community? If the, it sounds like maybe they are, if they're limiting their use of, to propane, small stoves and grills and that sort. Just, I'm just curious to see how, what, because I'm sure that's something that's in everyone's mind. Yeah, Leslie, you got a hand up there.
Yeah, multiple complaints and bonfires coming from that encampment. So whether he saw it actually, the residue or not, I have two formal complaints with the fire department where they had to respond to actual pallet bonfires. So I appreciate that there's nothing on the ground now, but that's not what the record is showing. There was a bonfire underneath the bridge at Santa Rosa Creek that went up into the eucalyptus trees. And then was a bonfire at the encampment that had pallets, wood pallets, eight feet tall at 10:30 at night. So I appreciate it's all been cleaned up, but they have had those issues in the past and the chance of going to even have an official again in the future. Can I ask one question of Carlos though?
Sure.
It has now been official, it's officially designated as officially, Fiskelini Ranch Preserve that the encampment is on, correct? That's what the Sheriff Department advised me two months ago. I want to confirm that with Carlos. Is it true or not?
Yeah, so as far as the confirmation on whether it is on Fiskelini Ranch or not, I've been working with the, the friends of the Fiskelini Ranch to figure that out. We know that it's on CCSD property. We know that it's, it's, it's either on CCSD open space or the Fiskelini Ranch. Whether it's, whether it's on ranch side or not, I'm not sure, but we do know that it's, it's on CCSD property.
Yeah, that's what the sheriff confirmed that they had had a discussion with county public works and the highway. The encampment members at that encampment stipulate that it is not on CC property and not on Fiskelini Ranch. So there's a gentleman who is running, a guy named Greg, who's one of the sponsors of the encampment, is telling the public since it's on the public roadway, it's illegal. And he's misinforming the public. So I just want to clarify, it is definitely a CCSD issue then. That is what I've been saying, but I wanted to make sure that you guys were saying that that's correct. Yes, it is our responsibility.
That's, yeah, I've heard that from John Weigold and then Carlos is also backing it up that, yeah, well, let's put it another way, it's definitely not county property.
Yeah, so I actually met with the Caltrans person about a few months ago, is, you know, to try to figure out whose property that was. And we met on site. They had their maps and we were able to confirm that it's not on Caltrans right away. And then that came back to us to figure out if it was on our property and we were able to confirm that it is on CCSD land.
Good. Thank you, Carlos. Well, again, while you're here, do we having any encampments anywhere else? Because I know we, we do have a lot of other lots here, here and there. Any of our, our other open spaces got issues?
Like I said, we, we, we've learned from some mistakes that we made in the past and obviously we're not experts at homelessness. We're learning, you know, as we're, as we're dealing with this. But one of the things that we've, we are trying to do is to do inspections on a regular basis. And that is allowing us to have a presence out there so that these, these folks know that we're out there watching. But it's also been allowing us to be able to interact with them before these encampments become larger. And so to answer your question, we, like I said, we did a full inspection last week on the troubled areas. We were not able to find any encampments on other CCSD properties.
Oh, thank you. So back to Claudia here. So Claudia, where do we go? Because I have what.
Do the, the draft copy so maybe it'd be easier for you to grab it. But I have some notes in the bottom of it, I think from our last meeting. So you might just agree with that.
Yeah, all I, all I was able to find was from Leslie on, in April, and I don't think, I think we went before that, beyond that, did you not?
Yeah, no, you received it here recently, last two meetings. I sent it out to everybody. I sent you a copy. It's just a revised version that removes pros. That's what I was instructed.
Yeah, 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 right.
And I just sent it to you about three minutes ago. I mean, so.
Okay, let's do it that way then. Wait a second, give me just a minute. There we are. Let me get this out here. Okay, you say you just sent it, so.
Hey, and Don, on the conservation easement on Fiskelini Ranch, CCSD is now in violation. You're not allowed to have camping sites or actual any type of burning devices like barbecues or butane stove. So you guys are now officially in violation of the actual conservation easement on Fiskelini Ranch Preserve, which is a pretty sticky wicket, all right? Because it has, I appreciate it. Everyone needs warmth and everyone needs to be able to cook their food, but the rules for Fiskelini Ranch Preserve Conservation is very clear on this. No vehicles, no fuels, no drones, which I sent you a picture of where they were using a drone to go along the houses along Park Hill. So.
Yeah.
We are now officially in violation of our own conservation easement by allowing this to continue on the branch.
Yes. Okay, here's, here's what Claudia just sent me. So let me put it up, make sure.
The bottom part of it, you can maybe like make a space there so nobody can see the bottom part of it because I have notes there and stuff.
Okay, let me share first here. Well, I think this is it here. Hold on. So is this it here that you're looking, what you got here? Did I get the right one? That is?
It's mine stops. What I wrote stops at prior to the Weigold wrote procedure to get rid of homeless. That's not my statement. That's.
I have notes on the bottom of this.
Yeah, that's Claudia's notes.
So is that big enough? I guess that's the first question. Can you all see it?
It could be a little bit bigger.
Let me see if I can make it bigger.
We should, could you close that window down, please, Don, for a second? Those notes should not be shown. Those are personal notes from Claudia. Rolled up, please.
We can't see those, I, you know.
We can.
So we can't see them, so.
Oh, you didn't want Claudia's?
No, no, I don't want my notes on there.
Okay, sorry. I thought you did, Claudia.
Make a space there so that those go away, so.
Yeah, I just won't move that. I'll just, we just won't go any further. Well, I can do that. There. Okay, let's try this now. So.
Scroll down, scroll down. There you go. Keep going, keep going.
I need to make it bigger. Let's see.
No, just keep scrolling down. Just get the notes. There you go. Stop right there. That's it. That's the entire article right there. Privacy is important here. Privacy is important here.
And it's, it's my fault for not being prepared. I apologize. Let, let me just try to make it a little bigger.
No, no, I'd rather not see the notes again, please.
Oh no, I won't show you the notes, I won't show you the notes, okay. I, I have no idea how this looks. Is this all visible? Everybody can see it?
That's fine, that's fine, that's good.
Okay, so Claudia, the floor is yours.
Oh, well, this is, this is actually Leslie's document. I think that, um, I, I think I, Leslie, I think I might have, I might have made some, you know, typo, not typo, my typo changes on it.
Claudia, you never sent me any changes. You sent me a list of suggestions of what direction we should go in, twenty options to go in for housing and feeding and other things, but you didn't send me any corrections to this actual document. I've never received that from you.
Okay. Well, that's-
Shoot it up, baby, go for it.
Well, I, I think that, I don't know if you wanna quickly read it, it's not very long. I mean, and then we can just decide if we like it the way it is. I, you know, I mean, that's-
The whole point was to remove pros. So the only paragraph could be a, a question is the bottom one that talks about an action plan. See, I put the goal of this policy document is to creation of a framework for developing these collaborative efforts. That's the area that gets kind of gray. That was the action plan because that was for the grants to be able to land on through pros. I kinda left that last paragraph in just to show you the direction we had, we're headed in, but it may not apply to this current actual policy. Could just stop at, uh, since the CCSD provides limited defined services, that paragraph could be the last paragraph. Doesn't have to add the last one, in my opinion.
All right, well, I can edit this on the fly here. So yeah, maybe we should just start down through it, then.
Make some edits, I just never sent it to anybody because I just did it on my own, like IE is not spelled capital I E, you know, little things like that, so.
Well, okay. Except maybe we won't include that section, but if we do-
It's okay, just need to change it to the right kinda I E, but.
Yeah.
No, this is hardcore rough draft, so please be my guest.
Lot of problem. Okay, well, let me start from the top here, uh, and if I can read it or you all can read it. The main thing is I wanna be sure the public can see it, so I presume they can. Till I read it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, sure, okay. And, and it should include the purpose statement here. So this policy is being created in an effort to protect the overall public health and safety. I'll change that to, uh, of the Cambria community at large, as well as restricting activities that could negatively impact environmentally sensitive-
Period.
Sensitive habitat. Uh, okay, background. The CCSD owns property, including the Fiscalini Ranch Preserve and parcels accepted from the Land Conservancy of S, of San Luis Obispo, dedicated to open space and subject to conservation easements that specifically prohibit illegal camping activities. So that's the background. So here's the policy. Said, illegal, non-sanctioned homeless encampments on district properly, property pose significant hazards to public health and safety, foster criminal activities, and create nuisance conditions affecting the surrounding neighborhoods. Thus, all legal homeless encampment, camp, encampments shall be removed from district property, property promptly upon discovery and cleaned sites shall be restored to their original intent and condition. Continued monitoring and enforcement actions will be necessary to guarantee that the heavily entrenched local homeless population does not create re-encampments on these corrected sites, which is of a particular concern for the district. Since the CCSD provides limited defined services to the Cambria community and lacks many of the resources necessary to adequately address the core problems surrounding homelessness in general that are fostering the creation of these illegal encampments, the district shall coordinate collaborative efforts and enforcement partnerships with the appropriate county agencies, as well as confor- conservation stakeholders and independent local nonprofits. Uh, and then, uh, new sentence here, let me just put the capital in there. Uh, the goal of this policy document is the creation of a framework for developing these collaborative efforts, i.e. an action plan that will be reviewed and modified on a yearly basis by the res- I presume you mean respective partners and the district.
Yes, sorry.
Let me get that, is that's a definite material change, yeah, respective. Well, they could be respected as well, uh, respective, uh, partners and the district. This action plan will instill strategies for cleanup measures, as well as how cleared encampments will be restored to their original condition. It will also document success of outreach programs, as well as outline additional security and outreach measures that may be necessary to prevent future illegal encampments from being reformed on the original sites. I believe that's where it stops, right? Everything else is extra notes.
Yeah, the problem is the whack-a-mole reformation of campsites. That is the universal problem of every community that I've researched. It's, in fact, at the Pocket Park, Carlos, no offense, but they're actually sleeping there at night now. So the people that you've moved off, the CCSD Pocket Park, were there last night sleeping. They've actually set up small tents after ten thirty at night when you're not here or available to monitor it. So, um, just a heads up, uh, they're back and they're actually living on the Pocket Park by the library, I mean, by the post office.
Okay, so, uh, back to our, uh, so, do, is, do you have any particular changes to what we just went over there?
I think it just needs, uh, you know, some, um, editing, you know, like, CCSD should be capitalized and the, uh, the district should be capitalized and the E should be fixed. And there's some things like that and some punctuation, like after habitat should be a dot instead of a comma. So I think if we could just go through and just, you know, if you know, if you do it now or do it later, but go through and just make some of those changes.
Is there any comments on the content?
Yeah, well, to, to ask Claudia first, I think Claudia, what I'll do if it's all right with you guys is, let me get all your input and then I'll go back and edit it, uh, for grammar and, uh, punctuation. Uh, but it won't make any material change and then pass it by you guys one more time, uh, before sending it forward. And we could even, if we need, if we feel like we're in a hurry, we can always establish, uh, create a special meeting if we need to. Go ahead, I'd like to hear. I do have one suggestion myself, but let me hear from the rest of you first.
Well, I think it sounds pretty good. Um, you know, uh, this is, this, this, this is a tough one, cause we're not really, you know, we, we don't have, we don't have what it takes to really, um, to deal with this thing. I, it's just, it's just an ongoing tidal wave and it's gonna get worse. I think it's very interesting what, uh, Leslie has discovered here about the business of, uh, of, uh, fire and the fact that these folks, uh, they just can't camp on that land. But I don't see any problem with, uh, with what I'm reading right here. As far as grammar is concerned, that's just a matter of sitting down and, and, you know, and running a scientist coma. I didn't, I do not think that that's worth our group's time and effort.
Your time is more valuable than that. And plus, I enjoy doing that kinda thing.
Yeah, yeah, you're perfectly capable of editing it and I think you have, uh, a- all the tools in between your ears to solve the problem.
Thank you, yes, somewhere in there. Uh, so, okay, thank you, Ted. Anybody else wanna make any comment on this?
May I make one statement, Don, about pushing this forward?
Um.
Now that we have a grant proposal for our GM to go ahead and push forward on grants, the sooner you get this policy in the book, the better. We don't have any policy on that. We have a procedure, but we don't have a policy on the books right now. So it would help if you decide to assign the task, the pros, or whatever decision the jet, the, the board decides to do for this assignment. The fact that you actually have it voted on as a policy in the manual gives you a place for grants to land, even in this format. So we're talking money, cause this is gonna be an ongoing problem for clearing out these sites and it's gonna be very expensive. So to help Carlos and get resources for Carlos and if, the, his, his section of the CCSD, I would say that push on us, you need to get this out as quickly as possible. It's been a year now. We've been working on this for over a year on this. I got it in August of, uh, two thousand, or September two thousand nineteen, so.
Been a while, yeah.
Would that be all right, just to get it forward and see what the, cause it's gonna bounce back anyhow. The chance that we're gonna get this back from the board is a distinct possibility anyhow. They're gonna wanna open this up for a bigger dialogue, so. Uh, I'm just trying to figure out the grant cycle is starting up for two thousand, uh, twenty twenty-one. So we wanna be on the edge of the curve on that, so we can start getting, there's a ton of money for homeless, uh, encampment cleanup now, so.
Okay, that, that makes a good point. I think I can see a way to do this. Ted had his hand up, let me, let, go ahead, Ted.
Um, I, I totally agree with Leslie. I, you know, we, we, we know, we're, we know we're gonna be, uh, uh, you know, this is gonna be a football, it's gonna be handed back and forth. I just wanted to say one thing. I know I sent to you guys an article on inexpensive, uh, homeless homes. I know it's not part of, it's not part of our deal, but you might wanna forward that on to Carlos, uh, because you brought up the business of costs involved in all this. And I, I, I think at a certain point, it would be in the interest of CSD and Carlos and all that, to really get an idea of how much time, how much cost has been, is being used to deal with this problem and how does that factor into what, what efforts you wanna make? I just tossed that out there, but I, but honestly, you know, for twenty-five hundred bucks, if you could put two people in an enclosure,
property.
It's, it's not ours, it's not our problem, it's not ours to do, but I passed that information on just for information.
Yeah, go, go ahead, Gordon.
Well, it's agreeing there that, uh, we don't wanna be involved with that, but I could see Ted's thought is for other people that may wanna get involved.
Right.
Yeah.
Correct, yep.
Good, good. Well, uh, Ted, uh, I'll see if I can locate that and pass it on, uh.
Oh, may I make my comment, please, sir?
Uh, wait, who's talking? Oh, yeah, sorry, Elizabeth, didn't see your hand up.
Yes, my hand, yes, thank you. Um, I'd make the following suggestion, and that is that you reduce this content down to two small paragraphs, starting under policy, because a lot of what's written here is procedures and operations to, um, follow through on a policy. And the Board of Directors has a propensity to, um, look at every comma in your proposals, as you know. So I would look where the, on the sheet it says policy, and I would use the next sentence, although I might just say, I can't imagine this, that illegal homeless encampments would be sanctioned. So just say illegal homeless encampments on district property pose hazards to public health and safety, foster blah, blah. And thus they are, um, shall be removed. Use the next sentence and stop. That's the policy. And then you can, um, bring to the board the, uh, recommendation of whatever operational, um, tactics and steps you think would be useful to make sure that this policy is adhered to. Because the strongest statement on this whole page is the statement under background. If it, if that statement is true, the CCSD owns property, blah, 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 that, and that specifically prohibit illegal camping activities, that's it. That, that's it, because you don't want to send in a policy that in some way, around the corner, even with desperate human need, you don't wanna send in a policy that somehow makes it a little easier to have illegality. So my suggestion, just to repeat and be quiet, is that, um, you might wanna include the background statement and then the next two sentences and stop.
May I, uh, interject, Don?
Uh, yes, thank you, Elizabeth. Yeah, go ahead, Leslie.
It's called tacit acceptance, Elizabeth. That is the legal term for illegal, non-sanctioned homeless encampments. It's what CCSD is doing as we speak.
I know.
Yeah, so that's why it's, it's, that's why it's written like that. It's an illegal, non-sanctioned homeless encampment, i.e. tacit acceptance, where we have put in resources available to the encampment on Cambria Pines Road. That's a legal terminology right there. So that's why it's mentioned in that context. We are supporting, we're violating the conservation easement ourselves. They are not, we are allowing it to happen. So that's why that's a clear definition of the non-sanctioned homeless encampments. It's not sanctioned by Fiscalini Ranch Preserve or the conservation holders. It's being sanctioned by CCSD by our actions, i.e. tacit acceptance. You want tacit acceptance in the document instead, that term?
That's, yeah, okay. Uh, yeah, I don't wanna get into any back and forth too much here. We'll, we'll get, we'll be here for hours. Uh, but Elizabeth, I see your hand still up.
I would like to commend volunteer Richards, Leslie Richards, because your analysis of the legal question is absolutely on target. What I'm saying is that the fewer words that are used to state that, the clearer it will be.
Okay, thank you, Elizabeth. Uh, moving on, uh, let me see, any other comments from the committee? Okay, I get to make my comment. So, uh, I, I think everything is good here. Uh, Elizabeth makes a good point. However, I think I would actually, I would go ahead and leave it pretty much as is, except for the last paragraph. If it were, if, if this were me doing it, I would say that what we're really doing in the last paragraph, that is actually directions to staff. So one could say, um,
That's from monitoring it.
I vote to remove the last paragraph.
Do that, I, I actually rather like it, but-
It's confusing, it's a, it's a gray area.
We can leave it off, we can leave it off. Um, and one thing I did like about it, um, no, I, we could leave it off. It's, it is actually more of instructions as to how to proceed. I did see something though, that you had in that I really liked. The reason I like the second paragraph, and this is more just for Elizabeth, uh, is that it does specify that the, the, uh, CCSD will, it is their intention and hope to cooperate with other, uh, other stakeholders in this. And I, I do like that reference. Uh, so, yeah, so with the permission of the committee then, uh, if we strike the, uh, this last paragraph, so I'm simply going to put it in brackets, I don't wanna lose it completely. It, it might be appropriate to stick it somewhere. And then, uh, I'll just make a few format changes, spelling issues, and give it some numbering and pass it on.
It's a hanging chat from the original policy.
Oh, the hanging. What? Okay, so, so what do, what, uh, I'll go ahead and this, I think that what we do need to do is provide a purpose that's often indicated in a policy statement, even, and so the purpose, the background, and then the act, policy itself, uh, with some appropriate numbering and leaving off the last paragraph. How does that work for you all?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay, well, it's, is that moved and seconded to approve what I just said? Which is, I, I'll repeat it, which is to keep the document as is pretty much, except for a certain spelling, uh, changes and, uh, some paragraphing and to omit the last paragraph that commences with the goal of this policy. So it's been moved and so- Yeah, okay. Uh, is there any, uh, discussion on the motion? Uh, hearing none, we're moving to a vote. So, uh, Osana, would you please call the roll? I wonder, is she out there?
I don't know.
Does she take the minutes?
Uh, no, actually John Nixon will be taking the minutes, uh, but I'm sort of, I'm gonna have to pull a lot of it off of the recording. Uh, well, absent Osana, I'll go ahead and call the roll. Uh, so, uh, let's see, who moved? It was moved by, uh, okay. Okay, Harmon, no, uh, yes, okay. And then the seconder was Leslie, so Leslie?
Yes.
Uh, Leslie, yes. Uh, Gordon?
Yes.
Gordon, yes, and Ted?
Aye.
Ted, yes. So motion passes for to zero, chairman not voting, and, uh, committee member Nixon absent. Very good. We've got under the wire for Claudia.
Wait, well then, and I got, I got time to get ready for my other Zoom meeting.
Okay, Claudia, so do you want any parting shots on, uh,
On what now?
On, on the correspondence to the board issue? Do you wanna have any parting shots before you go?
Uh, you know what? I didn't hear what the, uh, CCSD board said. What didn't they like about it?
It isn't that they didn't like it at all, it's just that it, they brought up a whole bunch of issues that we hadn't really quite thoroughly thought through yet.
Okay, cause I like the document the way he sent, and I, I, I'd just like to know, what are, can you give us a couple of issues that they brought up, just to give us an idea?
Well, let's see if I can, let me pull this over here. Uh, here we are. So this is, uh, the issues had to do with, let me see if I can remember. There are cases when the, every, uh, situations when letters are sent to all- There are cases when the, everything, situations when letters are sent to all the board and the general manager. Certain situations where the, it's appropriate for the president of the board to actually answer correspondence. And then there are issues about, well, what could the president, and then there are no policies yet set for this. But the idea would be, as one director was suggesting, is that in those particular cases, where either the general manager or the president was responding on behalf of the board, that the other board members should all receive a copy so that they know what has been said. That was one, one thing that came up. Making a distinction between individual, letters sent to just a single individual, as opposed to letters sent, say, to all of the board but not to the staff. They're kind of talking about those things, and also it came up as to where Brown Act violations might be occurring. And there was some discussion about, because some directors, for example, when I get something, especially if I get it in my district account that's addressed just to me, and it's something that the board is acting on or having, lately I haven't been answering them at all, which is not really, I don't like to do that, but it's a tricky business. And so it's very important, there are issues about when, when you respond to somebody, whether you're speaking as yourself or speaking for the board, for example, and that distinction might need to be brought forward. Because other directors actually will engage in long email conversations with ratepayers that might, that might be corresponding. And then another director said that they would, they always would just acknowledge the receipt of the letter and thank the person for their input. So there, there's always you can go on that. So that was the, the discussion wasn't, it was a little bit unfocused. But it just raised that we, maybe we need to think a little, maybe classify a little more what the various kinds of correspondences might be. And I think this is really worth looking at, because in addition, it kind of, we should be able to provide via this kind of a policy, give some guidance, especially to new directors as to what is appropriate for them to do and not do. There was some reference to, I forget what municipality, where they, they had special issues where you actually, if you, if you corresponded with somebody, you had to be very clear whether you were speaking for, say, the Board of Supervisors or for yourself, and you had to have all kinds of caveats and stuff. So you're, I'm just, I'm just sort of rambling Claudia, but that gives you the flavor of the discussion.
Thank you very much, I do appreciate that, and I am going to leave the meeting now. Thank you so much, I do appreciate everybody's hard work and great job on this homeless policy finally happening.
Yeah, that's great. Well, thank you Claudia, I'll see you on December 28th, I believe.
I better write that down, December 28th, okay, so I'll forget.
I'll send you a note as well, so you'll make sure.
Is that a Thursday?
It's supposedly a Thursday.
Okay, good.
I hope it's a Thursday.
Thank you. Bye all.
Thank you Claudia. Let's see, we still have a quorum, we have how many, Ted, Gordon, we still have a quorum, we're still good. I see Elizabeth has her hand up. Elizabeth?
Thank you, if it's, if it's in order, I'm not sure exactly how you operate these meetings really, but I want to add just one thing that was said this morning, because I think it raised a very, very interesting issue for this Board of Directors. And that is, I'll put it in my own terms, when I write to Carbehall, for example, he responds to me as a member of the House of Representatives, but not speaking for a decision by the House of Representatives. What I don't understand about the CCSD talk, especially when Mr. Carmel, the council of response, he makes it sound like there are only two choices. You respond as a director of the board, representing the board's action, or you respond as an individual who is not a director of the board. And I think the third option is the one that we, those of us who participate this way in the world, we use all the time. We write to an elected representative and expect that the elected representative will return a response in that role, understanding that they do not represent the organization, the whole organization to which they were elected. But that third option never gets brought up in the board discussions, and today I want to commend her because Gina Dickerson brought it up again. And she never gets a response from Carmel, because it doesn't fit his legal interpretation of reality, apparently. So I urge you, if you develop a policy, take into account more variables than they seem to do when the board discusses it. Thank you.
Thank you Elizabeth.
Can I ask a question? Elizabeth, did you get a response to the letter on my phone message this morning? Did you get my message?
Depends upon, since I've been monitoring dead sea otters, listening to the Board of Supervisors, listening to the CSC, CCSD board. I don't know, Leslie, refresh my memory, please.
You sent a letter on November 10th, 2020, very nice letter to the directors and John Weigold. And I was just wondering if you received a response to this letter, considering I want to.
Thank you, thank you very much. I did receive a response. I received a thank you from Tom Gray, because I sent it also to the directors-elect. And I received a response from Harry Farmer, the president of the board, and that was it.
Excellent. It's a start. Thank you.
Okay. Hold on, yeah Ted?
We haven't begun formal discussion on this item yet.
Not really, yeah. Yes, shall we begin the formal discussion? Let me, yes, let's commence the formal discussion. So go ahead Ted.
Okay, these are all very interesting things, and I'm really glad that the, that the board brought up all these, all these important facts and issues, and this is what I was getting to in the, in the, you know, in the, in the last, in the last paragraph. What, and I haven't copied everybody on, on my report yet, Don, because, well, I was waiting for the okay to do that. But basically what we did was, we concluded that, and I'll just read the conclusion paragraph here. "It appears to the ad hoc committee that the established staff process procedure is operational and working. The problematic area is what the board members' actions are. The individual board members can choose to respond or not, and that the response time could vary widely depending upon their perception of the nature of the issue. We encourage the directors to discuss this matter and establish an agreed process to avoid no-response scenarios. The policy committee can suggest possible ideas such as rotation, record-keeping, etc. However, without the board's input, this would be mostly an exercise in futility. It is important to respond in a timely manner to ratepayers, and given the volume of letters received, which is not very many, it should not be a terribly difficult task to come to some agreement. We stand ready to assist." And so what I, what I'm getting at here is, you and thankfully have, have received feedback from the board. Now, you know, if the board thinks that we would be well-advised to establish some sort of policy on this matter, given their input for their approval or editing or whatever, that's fine, I'm happy, I'm happy to do that. But, or we are happy to do that as a, as a policy committee. And, and so, yeah, I mean, honestly, the way the letters and so on and so forth are being handled by the, by the staff, it looked just fine. We did the research and we saw how that's all happening. And, and Don, I think you've identified where the real problem area is, and that's the individual letters that go to, or yeah, individual letters that go to individual board members or to the entire board. Who's tracking it? Who's responding to it? How, you know, what the disposition is of all these things? And how that wants to be done, the board has given a number of issues to be considered, and I think they're absolutely important issues. And, and I, you know, I think we can, we can certainly provide a policy, or at least a rough policy, for them to say yea or nay, or do this or do that on. But, you know, but yeah, I mean, I, you know, I just think that, that we're, that until, until such time as, as we do that, we're kind of done with this policy.
Okay, thank you Ted. What I'll do is, I do have your thing, just a second there Leslie, let me put your, Ted, let me put your thing up on the screen here.
Did you get that? Okay, I mean, I was worried I was missing something.
Can y'all see this?
A little bigger would be helpful.
Sure enough, let's see, hold on a second there.
Get most of it.
Now I gotta make the whole thing bigger, hold on.
Yep, that's good.
Who's on the ad hoc committee?
Ted. Myself, Claudia, and Don.
Okay.
Okay, is that, is that visible to everybody?
Yep.
Can we get a copy of this email to us, please?
The only reason, Leslie, the only reason I didn't send it is because it was still in the ad hoc committee, and I wanted to make sure everybody in the ad hoc committee had an opportunity to look at it before I distributed it.
Yeah, yeah, no Ted, this was great. And I guess, I was considering taking it to the board, and then Claudia responded that she had a few minor changes, so I thought I'd wait. But what we can do on this, if you like, let me speak for just a minute here, and then we'll get the other folks. If this is, this can go almost as it is, as a, again, similar to what we're doing where I would put it on the board agenda as an agenda item, and this would be the report that would then come to that, and they could then discuss it and remand it back to us if they want us to pursue this further, which I think Ted is what you're asking, is that correct?
Yes, I believe so. And also, I believe I sent you a copy that says 1040.2, so if you want to add 1040.2.
This is a standing committee report, this is not the actual policy itself, correct?
Yeah, yeah, but it's, it's, that's the number that was given to it, that's all.
Yeah, I'll change the number up there. Yeah, I wondered about that, I wondered why, what had happened. So I guess if that is the, what the committee wants me to do, is take this back as a request to the board to say, again, it's, these are the issues that we see, we think that we're glad to work on a policy for you, if this is something that you want us to do. And we could have them by motion send that.
Could you stop for a second so I can read it?
Oh, I'm sorry, old habit. Where do you want me to, at the top, and then?
Rolling up and down, up and down? Slow down.
Okay, I'll tell me when to move it.
A conclusion. We had that already, so let's see the bottom part of the page. There, stop. Okay, so I would like to say that the problematic area is in staff as well, too. Sorry, I have to disagree with your conclusion. I have had multiple email discussions with staff members who have written me email responses, letters saying, we'll get back to you, and then I never hear from them again. So this idea that staff is openly responding to letters, yeah, they send you a response saying gee whiz, we'll look into it, and you literally never hear from them again after that. There's like this way of getting out to the responsibility for actually answering the questions you are answering. It was to lead members of the staff on that question. So I think that needs to be, the conclusion part makes me a little concerned, I'd like to have it removed. To tell you the truth, if we're just focusing on the board's response, let's just focus on the board response. It's two different issues, right?
So. So Leslie, what you're asking is that first sentence to be removed?
No, I'm just saying that if that's, I may not be interpreting, this is the first time I've seen this document, I may not be interpreting correctly. I'm just saying the division between staff response and board response, it's just response. People were contacting different, like John Weigold, I have contacted John Weigold, asked specific questions and received response emails saying gee whiz, I'll get back to you, and then never heard from him again. And then responded back saying gee whiz, could you respond to my question? Oh yes, we're very busy, we'll look into it, we'll get back to you. And again, never hear anything again. So that's a communication as well, right? That's the whole situation, is responding in a timely manner to these email or formal inquiries. I mean, Elizabeth has been doing it for years and virtually never received, I'm impressed by the response she got on her November 10th. But John was CC'd on that as well, I'm surprised that the actual manager did not respond to Elizabeth as well for that beautiful document that she produced, quite elegant and very informative. So can we include staff as well as the directors? It should be everyone, right, on this response or not?
Okay, I know, Ted has his hand up, go ahead Ted.
Yeah, I see Leslie's, Leslie's point here. Let me just say this, what we, what we looked at here was, we looked at the mechanics, what happens to a letter when it reaches, you know, so-and-so's and such and such. We did not look at the response end to it. And I think, I think Leslie is absolutely right here, we should probably take a look at this and separate out, you know, the business of who is responding to letters depending upon which way they come in. All I can say is that, that when, when we did this, we just wanted to see what the, what the mechanics of the letters coming to CSD, what happens to them. Now, in terms of responding and so on and so forth, yeah, I think Leslie's got a point.
That's the important part.
Yes Gordon, so I'm still at a little bit, I see Elizabeth has her hand up, let us hear what she, well, first of all, has everybody on the committee had their say for the moment? Okay, Elizabeth, would you please go ahead and speak? You need to unmute yourself, please. There you are.
Somehow, somehow the hand up, hand down has. Oh, I, oh, I have to look at three, I have to look at four different sites on this screen right now to find out where to mute, unmute. Lower hand is, oh no, let me remove it.
Oh, okay. You, this one, you weren't the first that has had an issue there. It happens to me all the time.
Useless statement.
Yeah, so let me see, so, so committee, what do we do with this here? Shall we, do we need to work this over before sending it to the board? Or do we send it as is? And the issue is response, I mean, that is, I mean, we've already, you've already actually established a policy in terms of the letters coming in. Maybe we, I don't have it, or I don't think, it'd be kind of hard for me to locate it, yeah Ted?
Well, I don't think there is, I don't, if, if there is a policy about how letters are handled, I don't know what that policy is. What, all I've done here is established a procedure for what is happening when, you know, people address the board either via email or letters. And it pertains to, to the staff receiving these, these letters. That's, that's, that's all. I'm happy, honestly, what I, what I would like to do now, now that everybody's seen this, I'd be very happy to send this to everybody on the committee and then say, okay, where are the weak points here? What do you think needs to happen? And I'm happy to, to go through and, and supply edits and rewrites and so on and so forth with this document, which is a draft document, and nail some of these things down a little bit more tightly. I have no problem with that whatsoever.
Is there, is there a policy document you guys have created, or this is the research part, where is the policy document?
There actually, oh, forgive me Ted, this was 1050.2, there is a 1050.1. Trying to think where I could get that for you easily. It's, I don't know where they keep these things right now, but yeah, we did, we did.
It was like a small paragraph, it said, just corresponds to the board, I saw that, it was in the policy, the CSD policy manual itself.
Yeah.
One tiny paragraph.
Yeah, it's just a single paragraph, this is a more, this is actually the bigger problem. Well, Ted, we can proceed as you suggest with one caveat. You, we could send that, you know, folks could respond to you with their own changes, but you mustn't discuss those changes with anybody. So you're like a subcommittee of one. And you can talk to me about it, because we're, you aren't a mom. That would be okay, yeah, so I could say this, I think unless somebody gets on our case, I think that's actually an efficient way to go. So shall we do that? Is that?
Yeah, that, that's perfectly fine, or Don, people can respond to you and you can send it to me, and I'd be happy to massage it. And, you know, we can look at it in the ad hoc committee a little bit more closely. I'm perfectly fine with that. And, you know, we can look at it in the ad hoc committee a little bit more closely. I'm perfectly fine with that.
Um, let's do it this way, I think it'd be better if you did it, just because I'm afraid I might drop it on the floor as stuff is starting to come down on me. So.
If it's okay with everybody else, I'm fine.
Okay, I don't know that we need a motion on this one. Yeah. Say again?
I'll send this out at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, okay, so Ted will send this out and and, and folks, if you have comments, and Ted, when you do send it out, be sure to say, please respond only to, and don't even copy me or anything, just and just say, please respond to me only. And so the rest of you, if you have anything you want to do there, and, and and actually, it wouldn't even be amiss if you wanted to like involve other members of the public, it's that's, that's up to you, if you think there's somebody else that had a valuable idea, you could certainly share that. So, but anyway, so if folks could write, could send a marked up copy or their comments to you, you can assemble them and then you and Claudia together can kind of work that through. What I'm thinking is, what I've been hearing said is that the board probably does need to, remember, a lot of these policies are also guidance to the general manager. So if it's, if the board establishes a policy that all correspondence to, to the board or, or to the I don't know how to say it exactly, but shall, shall receive a response in a timely response or something, that could be a thing that the board could, could establish as a policy. And then how they do that be another issue. At any rate, if that's a good way to proceed, I think, yeah Ted, go ahead.
Please send me the board's concerns and comments along with, along with what you've noted here. Just send those to me, along with the comments that you have. And personally, I think the important thing to do before, you know, before we get involved too much with people outside of our group is for me to go ahead and do some rework on this, which I'm happy to do, and then get it back to our policy committee so that we have an opportunity to, to take, to take a look at this before we, before we move it onto the board.
Okay, that'll work, so again, just to repeat it for my own self, so, so committee members who have some, you know, who wish to make changes or suggestions, Ted will send this out to all the committee members and then they may respond to Ted only with the changes.
Everybody, you're out of, you're out of the picture until I get something.
Right, and then, and then Claudia will, will together, between the two of them, put their heads together and come up with something, hopefully, do you think we can do it by our, by our December meeting, do you think Ted?
Oh, I would hope so.
Okay.
Quick question, Don?
Yeah, Leslie.
At your meeting yesterday, did they read Elizabeth Bentonhausen's letter? Says it says, all email letters to the board comment address are read during public comment and a confirmation is sent to the sender. Did that happen on the November 10th letter that she sent in concerning the coast commission's decision on intent to serve? Was that read during public comment by your staff?
Why?
I, I, truthfully, Leslie, I don't remember, so much happens of those, I really have to listen to the recordings sometimes to remember what we all talked about. Perhaps John Weigold could answer that. Do you have an answer, John, to Leslie's question?
Could you repeat that question?
Sent a letter to the CCSD, to all directors and to you from November 10th, 2020, discussing intent to serves. She said, I wrote, I write to request that if you are not already there, done so, you should watch the 2020 California Coast Commission starts with that paragraph, it's talking about continuing to send out intent to serve letters after the coast commission. So in this document here that I see in front of me, it says that all email letters to the board comment address are read during public comment and a confirmation is sent to the sender. And Elizabeth says the only confirmation she received was from Tom Gray and from Harry Farmer, so I'm wondering if that's the policy, that's the new policy, or the already standing policy? It looks like that's what supposedly is the standing policy, so did that happen yesterday? Did you guys?
I know everybody watched that, but I don't know that it was read.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Oh, excuse me.
I was just gonna add, you know, what I might recommend is, is to call some of the other board secretaries of other districts and see what they're doing about this, that might skip to the answer real quick.
That's a good point, thank you, John.
Rather than trying to reinvent the wheel.
Yeah, 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 any help, any help that we can get out there is a good, is a good thing. Yeah, now, Leslie, now that you, you spoke in greater detail, I do remember that letter, but I honestly do not remember whether it was read in public comment or whether I simply read it in my own email. So, anyway. Back to the issue, so the, I think we, I, did we have a clear direction on this? I think we do. I'm going to repeat it one more time, just to be sure I got, oh yeah, go ahead Ted.
So what I would, the caveat I would use here is the expectation is that these letters will be read. Because clearly, my suspicion is, that did not happen this time.
Or it could, another possibility could be that sometimes if a person is physically present, then like Osana gives them a choice to either have their written comment read or a chance to speak, so that could have happened, but truthfully, I don't, yeah, I'd have to go look. So, so here, here we are, just to repeat, so, so you're going to send the, this, your report to all the other committee members. Yeah, I mean, you don't need to copy me on it, I'm just going to assume it happens. And then I'm going to send you a summary of the comments from yesterday's meeting. And the other, the committee members, if they have any comments, can either mark the thing up or just send you an email. And then you and Claudia will put your heads together and assemble it and massage it and, and then we will have something to discuss and consider at our December meeting, is that, yeah, yeah Ted, go ahead.
Yeah, that, that is correct, but we are still going to be, at the end of the day, we are still going to be asking questions of the board, which is given this information, given what we think is policy, where do you, as the new board, want to go by to establish a firm policy on this matter?
That would be fun.
Because otherwise, otherwise, we're just, you know, we're just saying, we like red balloons.
Yeah, no, I think you're, you're, you're right, and so that's, that's a good way to approach it, so December meeting, we'll have that, and then we can do that, and then I'll get it on a board agenda for the following month. And it'll circle around and back and forth, and eventually, something will happen, so.
Okay, I'm just confused by the research component here, it says letters, this is what Holly, this is what she, she's saying is happening, is currently happening, that they're scanning these letters and then giving them to your agenda packet, right? This is, this is what supposedly is the policy that is being worked on at the office right now, under research?
Let's see, we're.
Yeah, well, then Don should have received Elizabeth Bentonhausen's email letter for this last meeting, so this policy, this is not actually happening. I mean, I appreciate that they want something like this to happen, but this was supposed to be scanned and put in the packet, and it was, the one she sent it was prior to the deadline for the actual agenda packet to be produced, so the fact that her letter is missing from the meeting from yesterday is quite interesting.
Uh, yeah, this paragraph, I'm not sure that this paragraph is, is actually what's being done. Also, it may refer to physical letters because you wouldn't have to scan an email letter, so I, I'm not sure that that totally.
So there's a definition between actual snail mail letters and email correspondence as well here, so we have to clarify that as well.
Yeah, yeah, but I think you raised some good questions. Before we put this to bed, I think John Weigold has something more to say here, John, would you care to go ahead and speak?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, didn't hear what the last part was.
Anyone?
Oh, I, I still have my hand up from before, sorry.
Oh, okay, okay, no problem. I think we can, yeah Ted.
John, i- in response here, I know that we sent Haley a whole bunch of questions and you wondered what in the world we were doing. And so she responded to me with a description, and I'm happy to send you the email that, you know, that she responded, and I noticed she talked with you and Carmel about her responses. What I tried to do here was to summarize, you know, all that, you know, without using a zillion paragraphs and, you know, boring people to death. And, and so what we, what, what, what the concern is here, and, and is that with Elizabeth's letter, and this is of course, you know, something that just came up, the, this process somehow was not followed. And so that's a, that's a real big issue, if we're, if, if I'm told that this is the process or the, that's, that people are following, in this case, I wrote it down because that's what, that's what I was told the process is. If that's not happening, well, that's a, that's a problem.
I wouldn't say it's a problem Ted, that's the beauty of doing policy, that's the whole point of this, is to make these pieces fit together like this in a smooth issue, this is to help the district, to help the district, if these things aren't happening the way maybe they should be, we're just doing a little heads up saying, look, there's a little misdirect here, and we're trying to, to smooth the passage. So, there's no, on my part, there's no criticism of the district or anything they're saying, I'm just saying that I have an example here of what should be fulfilled through this criteria on the research section that was not, it was not actually added to the agenda packet or responded to from staff.
So I guess I'm curious as to what didn't happen, if it's a letter to the board for the agenda, that's different than correspondence to the board in general.
This is a correspondence to the board in general concerning intent to serve letters by Elizabeth Bentonhausen on November 10th, 2020, it's a, it's like a public comment, it was an email, it was sent to you and all the directors, Ryan O'Neal, Jack Amesworth. It was just a discussion dialogue that went, it's sort of a test of the emergency broadcast system to see if this would actually end up on the agenda packet or through this process and the.
Yeah, just a general letter to the board's not going into the agenda packet.
Okay.
Why, why would it?
Because it says, that's what Haley told in the research to the policy committee, letters which have seemed to have a very small monthly volume, reach the admin office and are forwarded onto the district clerk, and then it's attached to the board members meeting packet, that's the research we have here in front of us.
That's, that's, that's an email though, that's different than a letter.
Okay.
Stop you here, I was getting too much back and forth and we'll be here all night, so I see Ted has something to say and then I have something, we need to move on, yeah, go ahead Ted.
I am more than willing, John, to send you the email that I responded with Haley, I'm sure that she, that she copied you on it, but I will send it back to you, and if I have in any way misrepresented in my summary here what I, what I have digested from, from that information, I'm happy to, happy to make those corrections, in fact, I will include you on the, this document that I'm going to be sending out to the members of our, of our committee, if that's acceptable to Don.
I, let me think. I don't know, I'll leave that one up to John, I have to think about that, but, but if it's informational, but, but I don't want you to get involved of telling John what to do.
No.
Informational saying, the only issue here is what is, what is happening?
Who's suggesting that? No one suggests.
It's just a dangerous area because, you know, that's all, I just wanted to get clear, so use John as a resource, yes.
Let me, let me, may I, let me just say, I'm going to send John back the email that I, that I received from Haley. If John, again, you know, you've, you've just read this here, you know, you know, if you have some concerns about what I received from Haley, or there's some things that need to be fleshed out a little bit more, I'm all ears.
Yeah, I would say, the way I would suggest this, John, if you're agreeable, is, is if it's, I would encourage you to work with John or with his delegate on this issue because clearly, one of the questions is what is happening, you know, and what are the current issues? I wanted to make one note though, because there has been a recent change, I just, just saw it recently. When you go out and look at the, at the website and at the meetings, it's not 100% always there, but in some of the recent meetings now, you will actually see, as you click on the meeting icon, you know, for that date, you'll see not only the agenda and the minutes, but you'll actually see written comment. There will be an actual, where you can actually click on it, and it will actually show you all the written comments that were received, so.
Correspondence file like the coast commission does, that's a brilliant idea, that's.
Great, you know, and compliments on that, because that's a new feature, and they've just been implementing it, and I think next time you have nothing better to do, go out and take a look at that, I think you'll.
Well, I'm gonna cheat if the November 10th letter's in there, let's try that, well, use that as a test run on this.
I, I don't know if it'll be up for, it takes them a while to get it, so, but if you don't see on November, look for an earlier meeting just to see the format. But I think ultimately, it should, if it's, if it's not there now, I'm sure they will eventually get it up there, because I think that is their intent. Can we move on? Are we okay, everybody?
Yeah.
Good, good, okay, well, you're doing good, and this next one will be an interesting test. This has to do, let me, let me unshare here, okay. So now I can see you all in your nice big, yeah. Okay, yeah Ted. Yeah, go ahead Ted.
Do I copy, do I copy John then on the document that we've been looking at here, or do I just copy John on the email that I received from Haley in response?
I think.
That's information.
Yeah, I would say I think it'd be most useful if you just kept him in the loop in terms of what information you're receiving from Haley at this point. It's not like John doesn't have a lot to do.
Oh, I am.
John, if in your interactions with, with Ted, you see, you ask, you find you want more information, go ahead and ask him, I don't have a problem, you know, but I just
Sorry.
Wanted to be sure that we didn't.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I wrote most of those answers on that thing he's.
Okay.
So, I'm pretty familiar with it.
Good, all right, this next one, now this next one is actually the purchasing policy, but only a part of it. This is the reason, how we got into the purchasing policy originally, if, if some of you, let's see, I think Ted, you'll remember. Gordon may remember also, this came up to us originally as the issue of, because we have no policy, there's nothing anywhere in the existing purchasing policy. Talking about the purchase of used equipment.
No.
And there's several issues there because there's certain, certain aspects in the purchasing process can be short circuited in the event of a, of a or in the past where it's been useful to, to purchase something where you, because it's used, you can't, you use quite the same kind of procedure you would use if it was a new piece of equipment. So it came to us and we did start to discuss it, but I'm just wondering if in the, in a half an hour, I started to try another way of working just for fun to see if it works, is with your four minds here, can we come up with a two or three sentence policy regarding purchase of used equipment?
He's like a fixture now. It's like, he's like, he's supervising, sorry. What I miss?
He wants to come up with a sentence or two about used equipment policy.
Yeah. Like, like if one of you has an idea about what that policy should be.
Can I make, can I make an input?
Sure.
Used equipment, the EWS was used equipment, so there should be a roof on how much used equipment can be purchased at an auction, remember? All the equipment at the EWS was used at a fracking pond, all $8 million of it, so, you know, you can get into some sticky wicket here on purchasing used equipment without the board of directors being involved, just a side note, remember? So.
So again, that may indicate the need of a policy.
Oh, yeah.
That'll be, it came up actually, as I recall, in the context of the, of the back truck, I believe. Uh, that'll be, it came up actually, as I recall, in the context of the, of the vector truck, I believe. Vector truck.
It was the timing of auctions, they wanted to have the ability to actually go online and do the online auction was, was. You couldn't come back to the board and buy the equipment on the auction because it was a timely issue, that was the problem, that was the original issue.
Something, yeah, yeah. So, does anyone want to make a suggestion on this? Oh, I'll hear John, sure, why not?
Uh, the bigger issue is there's no ability to get three bids.
Right.
That's, that's the essence of it, there are no three bids, we need a truck. We can get three bids for the exact same truck, if it's new. But we can't get three bids, so there, there's, there's no, nothing I can point to to say, hey, I could save, you know. Two thirds of the price by going off on this auction and buying this used truck. Um, there's no ability in our program that says I can do that.
Right, yeah, and I think that's what, why this came, this came.
Generally like to try to follow the rules.
Yeah, yeah, there you are. Uh, it seemed to me as the earlier discussion, just a second Leslie, uh, there, yeah, Leslie, go ahead, you, you first.
You're gonna use truck.
Uh, are you open for dialogue on this?
Uh, yeah, 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 please.
Okay, so what I did was I looked at the purchasing policy in general, just looking back, I reviewed what the person in. We have ranges from two pages to two hundred pages on purchasing policy and all the other CSDs all over the state here. So this is a very sticky wicket and can get into very much details. The one thing that rang true through all the discussion was. Financial limits. And all the CSDs have had problem now recently with their policy, purchasing policy going a little bit too overboard. And they have been raining back their actual staff and general managers from twenty five thousand dollars down to ten thousand dollars. Without okay from the board of directors on any purchase, whether it's used equipment or otherwise. So I think the one issue that kind of concerns me is having this cart block to spend as much money as you want. Because it's a timely issue, you can't do three bids, you have to go on auction. That's where the sticky wicked here is and the conservative move by all the CSDs has been not to open the door to purchasing. Freedom, but to actually slam that door very hard and shut very fast to a lower level of ten thousand dollars. So we kind of have a conundrum here, right?
Yes.
The vector truck was quite expensive and we did, it was a great deal and they did a great job on that, but. There are exceptions to the rule on this, I see, but we can get into a lot of trouble on this too, could we not? When you have this not involving the directors and what's going on with the situation on purchases. This could, unless there's a limit, unless there's an absolute limit on costs, so that would be my only concern.
Okay.
A ceiling, if you will.
Some kind of a ceiling, okay, Ted. And then Ted and then.
Yeah, I, I like, I like that a lot, I mean, look, here, here's the deal. It, you know, if you're looking at, if you're looking at purchases, say, over ten thousand dollars, uh, you know. If, if, if it all falls apart, you know, we've lost ten thousand dollars, that's a bummer. But, you know, if it's at twenty five thousand dollars or thirty thousand dollars or whatever. Now you're talking about a bigger hit in the pants. So, yeah, I, I'm really hearing what Leslie's saying here, I think these limits are probably where you're gonna have to go.
Okay, thank you Ted, uh, yeah, Gordon.
One of the thoughts I had would be related to used equipment would be if we had something in the budget that related. From the RNS department that says, hey, this is on our agenda for future purchases. And if it's on the budget for ten thousand or whatever dollars and he finds a super deal for eight ninety-five. Then he say, wow, I'm doing wonderful, if he goes out and pays forty thousand for it, uh, then he's out beyond his league. And so I agree with the ten thousand and it should be on the budget, program someplace to justify. That they really need it and this is not a pleasure seeking event.
Okay, all right, so I'm kind of hearing a couple of things, but I'm still not hearing much of a policy coming out of this yet. Um, I'm thinking that maybe just based on what you all are saying, um, well, let's get a little more discussion here. I, I don't think we're gonna come up with a policy today though. Uh, but maybe, yeah, to just raise, what are the issues? So, uh, there was issues about spending. Yeah.
Warranties are the biggest issue on used equipment, so that's the biggest problem is. If that vector truck failed, and by the way, we had to do a lot of repairs on that vector truck, I don't remember if you remember, but there was a two thousand dollar repair. When we first got that used vector truck, so that, that kind of, uh, the issues like that can pop up on used equipment. That's a serious situation, so what if that vector truck had failed miserably? What if we bought that used equipment? And instead of a two thousand dollar, it was a twenty thousand dollar repair that we had to do, so. Not that I'm saying, I don't, I don't, I'm not saying that I'd lack confidence in our staff, I think your staff did an excellent job on that purchase. But I, that may be an outlier, I, I'm concerned about this, so we're gonna just start looking at auction for all this used equipment for the CCSD to save. Uh, dimes, and by the way, uh, side note too. I appreciate that there's people in this community that are very wealthy and they think that twenty five thousand dollars is just a drop in the bucket. My entire income here was forty four thousand dollars, so this idea that twenty thousand or ten thousand is not a big difference. You know, to a lot of people in this community, it is a huge difference, so heads up on throwing these numbers around, very, uh. Cavalier or casual, it is still coming out of our pockets and out of our, in our rates. So we are concerned about, the whole community is concerned about this, purchasing.
Cool, uh, yeah, okay, before John, before you weigh in here, I, uh. I guess what I would like to hear from you all is when would it be all right to purchase used equipment? But now let, let me let John come in while you contemplate that question, oh, he dropped his head down, okay Ted, go ahead.
Maybe, maybe we get, maybe we get to a point where we say, used equipment does not get purchased. Unless it travels under the nose of the board.
That would be a policy, okay, that's a policy.
Yeah, I mean, uh, that, that way, that way, all this, uh, you know, the pros and cons of, uh. Of any particular purchase of used equipment is at least viewed by the board before somebody cuts the check.
Okay, now we're starting to get a policy, okay, go ahead Gordon.
Well, my policy was that it couldn't be purchased unless it's on the budget, somewhere listed. If it's not on the budget, it's not to be purchased as used unless the board is approving it. That's what I think a policy, cause we need it on the, the board, so it's a policy that. It's a recognized need for a new truck and that would be appropriate, I think.
That's what happened with the vector truck too, by the way, Don, that was on a policy was what, three hundred thousand and they were, or. I think the numbers were pretty high, two eighty for the actual new vector truck and then it, or I could be wrong on these numbers, but I know there was a. Brand new version, which was on the actual budget and then we were able to save the funds, so you could cool that route, we need these RNI pieces of equipment. We could put it for the actual whole, real cost on the new units. And then what the actual use cost would be already on the, that's what, what Gordon is saying, it's already been established and we've made a savings, isn't that wonderful? They've gone through option, found a used unit that's certified, so. I think Gordon's right, it has to be already pre-approved for expenditure of purchase and for the following year, how about that? That would be a criteria.
Okay.
No surprises, that, I think that is what we're saying here.
I'm hearing two criteria so far, the, it needs to be a budgeted item. Uh, and, uh, it needs to, and we're talking used equipment now, needs to go for board approval, those two, uh, requirements, so, yeah, Ted. And then John.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, you know, uh, yeah, the first part, the first part of the journey is, what's the budget? Right, I mean, if you don't, you don't have a dollar on the budget, you can't, you shouldn't be buying it in the first place. And you shouldn't be buying it in the first place, in my opinion, if you're buying a used piece of equipment, it should run under the board's nose, in my view, but.
Okay, well, no, that's, that's reasonable, that's very reasonable, so that's, I'm, I'm hearing two policy things, anybody else wanna weigh in on any of those other? Uh, John, I see your, your hand is up there. Yeah.
Sure, um, so a lot of these used issues are time sensitive, so if you're expecting me to go before the board, it won't happen. Uh, and I don't need the policy then. So, you know, an example would be the transfer switch for our generator at the wastewater plant. There was only one of those in the United States and we had no backup, so if that thing burned out. When, when we had to hit the switch, uh, and shift the generator, if that thing blew, we're, we're done. Um, they bought a used one several years ago, so that would be an example, something, something used. If we, if we have to buy something used, it's gonna be time sensitive, so, uh, that's one thing I would ask you to take into account.
Okay, uh, Ted?
Oh, complete, completely unders, completely understandable, uh, you know, at a circumstance like that. I don't know how much it cost, but I'm sure it wasn't cheap, cause none of this stuff is. Um, yeah, I'm sure it was very expensive and the ship was, you know, the shipping cost was through the roof. Uh, however, uh, maybe, maybe what we need is some kind of a mechanism where, you know. Yeah, somebody calls up John and says, you know, X, Y, Z blew up and I gotta get it here in two days. You know, and I found the one, the last one in the universe, so I'm calling up. Harry Farmer right then and there and saying, well, you know, I mean, let's, let's, let's. You know, maybe it's an emergency moment for the board, I don't know, but, uh, you know, I, I fail to believe that the board cannot act. Cannot act quickly on an emergency situation, I mean, that's just, you know, we, we've gotta be able, we've gotta be able to be more flexible. With, especially with all this old equipment that we're nursing forever.
Yeah, let's think about that for a minute, uh, time, in terms of, the board's special meeting can be called with the twenty-four hour notice. So I guess, John, the issue is, uh, have you, are you in situations where even that twenty-four hours? Well, twenty-four hours plus the time for the board meet, to meet, so say, where you have to act within forty-eight hours.
Yeah, I mean, there, there could be cases like that, for sure. But I mean, theoretically, we could do an emergency board meeting, but, um, it's midnight, the thing just blew up. Um, you know. Uh, I'm, I'm taking an extreme example, of course, so, you know.
Okay, first I got Ted and then Leslie.
Uh, John, you're never gonna get that piece of equipment tomorrow, I mean. You know, I, I think you had to send to the east coast for this piece of equipment, I mean, it probably took four days to get. Um, yeah, you can, you can, you can make the buy right away, but. In the end analysis, it's, it's not like, you know, it's not like Star Trek. Then it gets here, gets, gets beat here, so.
The, the bottom line is, if, if it's too hard a process, the staff won't, won't bother with it.
Okay, well, that's, that's important too. I'm, I, Leslie, and then I have a comment, go ahead Leslie.
Okay, so I'm. Okay, so we have a transfer switch that has no backup, that's, that's an older transfer and has, and should have a backup. That should be on the RNI list for a piece of equipment that should be purchased, as in Gordon's saying, in the future, right? It would behoove you to have a backup switch, so you don't put yourself into emergency situations like this, this is.
We have, we have an emergency backup.
Okay.
We have, we have the only one left in the United States.
I'm glad to hear that, to tell you the truth, good news.
I asked all these questions when I came in.
Yeah, that, that, the time sensitive issue is the part that is getting stuck in everyone's trough, that you have to have your equipment right now, that you have to have a go through.
It's, it's less the equipment, it's, it's what we wanna buy used that's available right now. So you go on, let's say you wanna, you find something on Craigslist, gosh, I could really use that. You know, there's, it's not really an emergency to call the board together for that. But I could save the district money by buying whatever I just found on Craigslist.
No, Mr. White.
But I ca, I can't follow the purchasing agreement, cause I can't get three bids on there.
Yeah.
All right, uh, let's see, uh, Leslie, before you did Gordon, uh, Gordon, I think you were ahead of Leslie, or no?
No, she came back on.
Okay, go ahead Leslie.
I, I, I have never seen any CCSD in the entire county that I have researched that has cart block purchasing by their general manager. When they feel like, and I appreciate that that's what you wanna do, I don't see that happening anywhere in the real world right now, so. I, I appreciate, there's all things we want and I, and there's, uh, the, the issue of not bringing this before the board or not having on the agenda. For the budget for the year is a sticky wicket for the entire community, we've been in issues in the past where that was abused. So we're all, not you personally, sir, it's just that, me personally, I am paranoid of giving just cart block to having the GM just purchase. Whatever they want without having review to the board of directors, that's. And so that's why there's limits on purchasing that are established in current policy for twenty five thousand dollars, that's why we establish that for other purchasing. So I would like to have at least a ceiling on how much can be used, if we're gonna go in that direction of letting you go ahead and make those types of purchases. There would have to be a ceiling before, uh, they could not be gone over without the review of the board of directors. No matter what this time sense.
I, you know, I'm just looking to save money, if you can say no, and I'll just keep buying new stuff. It, but I don't have an ability to save anything, that's all.
Okay, wait, wait.
I'm not, I'm not dying for this, I'm looking to save money.
Too much back and forth there, uh, yeah, uh, Ted.
Oh, listen, uh, you know, I, I, I totally, I, I totally understand what, what, uh, what, what John is saying here. As far as trying, trying to save us money, but, you know, uh, with this, for this particular piece that we're talking about, they just don't make them anymore. So, you know, we're, we're at, we're at a rock and a hard place with so much of this infrastructure. You know it and I know it, and that the fact that we don't have the funds available right now to upgrade stuff to a level. Where you can get parts that aren't the last in the universe, that's a pretty big problem. And, and, you know, uh, that's something that the RNI committee, the board, everybody should be looking at. Why in the name of God are we still trying to support all this archaic equipment? I know you're looking at it, I know you're doing it, but I, I do think, I do think that, uh, a, a limit here at least. Uh, you know, is, is, is the, is the very bottom line to how, you know, to how we could get a, a handle on some of this. And if it's over that limit, it really does need to go underneath the board's nose, in my view.
Okay, well, let, let me jump in there for a minute, there is a spending limit already, you know, we have, uh, there is a, we're under our emergency declaration. That a limit is raised to thirty-five thousand dollars and fifty thousand with. Conversation of the, with the president, that's under the emergency declaration, uh, if it were non-emergency, I think we're still at twenty-five thousand. As the, uh, purchasing authority, so there is, there is a limit in, in there anyway, in terms of, uh, just ordinary, uh, doing of business.
Yeah, we might.
Also, uh, there is also wording in the, uh, current policy regarding single source, uh, procurement. So in a case, I would say that in a case where the only possible piece of equipment. Is in fact a used piece of equipment and it's the only one in existence, then I think that would fall more under the single source ruling, rule. Uh, so I'm not sure that that's really a situation that we're talking about here. Uh, I, I think this is enough discussion for today, we're not gonna reach any conclusions, but it's actually been very productive. Uh, Gordon, I'd like to hear from you though, one time, because when we started this discussion, uh, last year. You had some very definite feelings about the matter, do you, do you recall, or would you like to weigh in on that at all? I, I could quote, afraid I miss, I might misquote you.
Well, I don't have the exact concerns, but the thought I had was the limits was like we're suggesting now. To have, uh, concerns, but as I had mentioned here, it also was that there needs to be an acceptance by the board. That this is what needs to be considered as productive for the savings. My biggest point about used equipment is the time you get it there and you find out this widget doesn't work and you're spending as much money as you, you bought a new one. Now, if there's no other ones existing, whatever, that's something only up to the, the person purchasing and the guy selling it. Cause there's always something around that you can jury rig or find another method of doing it. And sometimes your savings, I found with used equipment, is that, uh, you get involved with pumps, for example, and. He says, well, I got a special deal on a pump out here, it fits right in here, but it's, uh, ten years old. And after you replace the bearings and the impeller and another packing expenses. You could have bought a new pump for less money, that's what I'm trying to say with used equipment, that's a, a big unknown, just like an automobile. You never know until you drive it and you still don't know.
Yeah, oh, thank you Gordon, that was sort of what I remembered, it seemed to me that you weren't all that sanguine about purchasing used equipment, that it. Uh, it, it could actually raise more problems than it could be solving. Uh, I think that's enough for the moment on this one, uh, I'd like to reserve a few minutes just for future agenda, let's make sure that we're all together on that. I think on this one, I'm still kind of rather liking this, uh, rather. I think on this one, I'm still kind of rather liking this, uh, rather freewheeling discussion. I think, I'd like to try this again next time, uh, with the, the full complement and just sort of see, and even if we don't arrive at something, already, I think I've beginning to see where these concerns are going and I may be able to summarize some of that for you. Uh, I'd, I'd like to try it as a different way of working. What we've done before is we've been assigning this kind of work to subcommittees and then coming back to the whole committee. But I'd also like to try working as a, a committee of the whole, as it were, just to see how we do on that. Because sometimes I have a feeling that might actually work better in some ways. Uh, yeah, yeah, go ahead, Leslie.
I have some time now, because I'm done with the homeless policy, so I can deep, I can dive in and find exactly what other, uh, agencies, or if they do have that, uh, specifically different policy or debating about or thinking about going in that direction. I haven't found anything yet, but I haven't actually dug deep enough to actually find out if there is specific timely, uh, time-sensitive purchasing policies. I would need a little time to research that.
That would be wonderful if you do that. So I'll, I'll make you the, uh, an ad hoc subcommittee of one to research, uh, what did you just say? You, you said it very clearly, would you mind?
Time-sensitive used equipment purchasing.
Got it, time-sensitive. Keep it simple, so I can get it down, sensitive used equipment purchase. Okay, so we have a, a new subcommittee there. So Leslie, when we bring it back, uh, we're not trying to, you're, you're bringing information, we're not formulating a policy, uh, but what would, you'll be, uh, information which can be input into this process. So used equipment purchase. And John, uh, I think we will very much appreciate your presence at that, during that discussion. Because I think it's, it's something that everybody, if we, I, I'm not asking you to all hold hands and sing kumbaya, but I think we can arrive at, at, at a, a statement, you know, that'll, uh, give you some guidance on the one hand and keep the community, uh, so that they, they have a real understanding of what the issues are and give them some sense of security going forward here. Uh, and unfortunately, yeah, we do have past actions which have been, uh, have been not conducive to trust, and so we're still, uh, having to deal with the fallout from that. I, I thought I saw somebody's hand up over at Gordon's place, was Leslie or Gordon, did you have a hand up?
No.
Okay, so I just, in the, in the, in the last two minutes, uh, future agenda items, let me tell you what I've got so far. Yeah, where is my tentative thing here? Maybe I won't tell you. I think I've, I've lost my notes on that, so let me just ask you if you have anything in particular that you'd like to see brought up, say, uh, next month. Uh, I think we, we have quite a lot, there'll be grants, uh, you'll need to review the, uh, the final version of the director's replacement, let's see, grants, final version of director's replacement, something else. Oh, homeless, yeah, that one, we've got a lot. I don't think we need anymore unless somebody's got something they're really want to deal with. Okay, yeah, Leslie, uh, Leslie and then Ted.
Don, there's been an issue here recently, the last six months, uh, with a rollover of admin staff through the office. There's been a high turnover rate of admin staff that are temps. And a lot of information has been, uh, expressed by these individuals who have come and gone. And, um, one of the situations that came up was concerning the badger meters, the water meters. And I just wanted to bring it up to your attention that I don't know if there's any type of, if this would be part of the policy committee's purview or not. But the, um, the issue with the badger meters and the failure of the badger meters and how important this equipment is for getting funding for the district by accurately documenting what's going on with actual demand and usage. So, um, I was just concerned, because I've never seen anything discussing, uh, CCS equipment on the other side of the meter. It's like the, the citizenry is responsible for their side of the meter, but then the staff was saying, no, you're responsible for the badger meter as well. Now, this is what would, yeah. And the staff was saying a bill went out supposedly concerning a rental that the tenants had vacated and the property owner was contacted by the CCSD with a past due bill because the badger meter had been recording incorrectly for the last year. And supposedly the, uh, tenants had been paying their bill every month, even though it was less than what they may or may have not been using. So there was an assessment made by admin temp staff of the previous year's bill. They calculated the difference and then billed the property owner for the difference after the fact. Do you understand? So our, our property owner was moving a new tenant in, was not allowed to open up a new water bill in the new tenant's name, and the CCSD was threatening to turn the water off until the property owner paid the back due balance because the badger meter was not recording correctly. That died, but it was just an interesting, uh, discussion of a problem we're having with equipment. Who's responsible for that equipment? And we have admin staff that are saying, oh, no, no, that's on your side of responsibility, not our side responsibility. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention, this is an opportunity for me to bring this to your attention. Mr. White Gold is listening on the air, I don't know if there's an actual policy hidden here, but temp staff, admin temp staff, they're in positions of authority that are making mistakes like this. I'm not even certain in the policy personnel manual if there is a policy on dealing with this temp situation that we've been dealing with for so long here, and the mistakes that they may or may not be making in the populace makes the community nervous.
Thank you, Leslie, yeah, that's probably, well, I, two, two comments on that. Uh, if, if the property owner, if there was an issue there and, uh, it, the property owner's, uh, course of action is to appeal to the board. In, in that issue, who, who's responsible for that meter could come up at that point. As to, uh, as to, uh, how staff is performing, that's directly under, uh, the general manager's purview. So he's the one you need to be talking to about that.
Right, so we're, we're not gonna be doing any staff policies in our policy process. Okay, I just wanted to confirm with you.
Well, yeah, generally not, because we, we don't, unless we're asked to, we don't muck around with the procedures and, and the stuff that's going on, uh, you know, we, we're dealing at a really high level. If there was a policy issue at a very high level saying, uh, all district staff shall be, wear red hats.
Yeah.
But, uh, except on Thursdays, uh, you know, or something.
Well, qualifications of temp staff, we have a lot of turnover of temp staff who may not actually be qualified to be giving out the actual information that they're giving out to the public. It does not.
We have no temp staff right now. We haven't had any temp staff for over a year.
We're, we're gonna have to have a motion to extend it, we go too much further. But anyway, so I would say, yeah, I think, any questions having to do with operations, start with John, talk to him first. And then if you're, and that's the, the appropriate way to go as a rate payer. And then if you still don't have satisfaction, then you come to the board.
Okay.
Yeah, as to the badger meters themselves, that's probably our, our issue before it gets to us, so that would.
They should go to the RNI meeting and these people that are dealing with this issue, they should bring it to RNI.
I would start with that, start with, you know. And then if they don't get satisfaction, then move, move forward along that. Ted, you had something you wanted to say on that?
Uh, at the end of the meeting, Don, can I speak to you just one-on-one?
Sure, okay, I won't close the meeting, I'll just, we'll send everybody else away. Well, no, we can't, uh.
I can assign you as the host, Don.
Why don't you do that, yeah, then you, then you, then we, uh, then Ted and I can just.
I will be long, I'll be long.
No, not a problem, it's just, uh, because, because John and, uh, Osana are, uh, they've been hosting it, so we have to switch.
Osana, you can, you can leave.
Okay, you want me to just leave, um?
You're all good, I already passed the host to Don.
Okay, and, um, we had some bad connection and it might have, uh, it was recording, should I stop recording again?
Uh, why don't we get to the adjourn, well, no, are you, you are recording, just a second while we adjourn and then stop the recording. So if there's no further business, uh, this meeting adjourned. So thank you all for your attendance, now you can stop.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Leslie. Everybody stay healthy, try not to get sick if you can. And then, yeah, so if you'll hand the host, uh, yeah, so Osana, I'm just gonna stay and hang and talk to Ted here and then I'll close the meeting when Ted.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, everybody, thank you, Gordon. This was fun, I, this is my third meeting today, so I'm gonna. Yeah, right, okay, so, so, so you can go ahead and, and sign off, Osana, it'll, it'll still.
It'll still be okay, all right, I don't wanna leave and then, um, okay.
Thank you.
I just wanna make sure, okay, I'm gonna leave, hopefully you guys are still up back on.
And if not, then we'll have learned something.
Okay.
Yeah, so, and let's.
Bye-bye.
Okay, bye-bye. Yeah, when do you know?
Well, I think somebody's, somebody's still recording.
Uh, oh, yeah, I think maybe I can stop it, hold on a minute.
Yeah, I think you're the one that has to stop the recording. Down at the lower left-hand corner.
There, I got it.